Good morning. I'd like to call to order the March 6, 2025 Conference of the Mobile County Commission in preparation for our March 10 regular commission meeting. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am. We have a speaker today. It's Dale Potts, and he is with Georgetown Volunteer Fire Department, and he would like to address the commission related to volunteer fire departments. And he provided each one of you a goodie bag. Dale, if you'll come up to the mic.
Hi, my name is Dale Potts. I live on Boo Town Road up in Centrenell. I work with seven departments, and I work all over Mobile County. I do Make-A-Wish programs, and I was a Marine, so I do that, too. And I brought y'all gifts to let y'all know. There's a Bible in there. I passed out 2,200 something Bibles to fire responders. We need help mentally. We work a lot of calls that are bad, but we also need financial help. This is six years' worth of me putting my money in the bank. Six years I've been in the hole because I love my community so much. And I'm just asking, if we need a fire truck or something, please help us. Help y'all. That's all I'm asking, and I thank you.
Which department are you with?
I work mainly with Georgetown, but I work with Centrenell, Turnerville, Tanner Williams, Wilmor. I've helped with Mobile City, Sims, Sarah Land. You basically named somebody. I was at Doc and Ida a while back. They have a big fire. I've got certain skills. I was in the military. Me and my chief, he was Navy, I was Marines. We have certain skills with EOD and stuff that is needed. We need people with skills. I've got two sons that are doing it, and they're going through training right now. So it takes a while to get the process done, but we love our community that much. We will do the training to help help people. You know, we've got to show love and compassion. That's what we should say. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Gordon. I know we checked. There's a grant out there available, I think maybe CBDG funds or one or the other, that we checked the fire departments in my district. And I'm sure this goes without question, but I assume that we checked the other fire departments in Mobile County to see if any of them qualified for that.
Yes, sir. Good morning. So we've done a review of all the volunteer fire departments across the county. Some of them are in qualifying areas, so I'd be happy to talk to each of you and Mr. Potts more about which fire departments might be eligible for that kind of assistance.
Yeah, Mr. Potts, after the meeting, if you'll get with Gordon, I know there's a grant available right now. You had mentioned fire trucks, and that's why I brought it up, because we had checked in my district, and unfortunately, because of the economic status of some of the areas, we have areas where there's pockets that would qualify, but once you put those circles together, it takes them out of qualifying. And that's why I was asking Gordon. Gordon takes care of our grants. If you'll get with him after the meeting, maybe we can look at those fire departments on the north end of the county that you mentioned you're at and see if any of them qualify for that grant. Thank you, Gordon.
No more speakers.
Ask the commission to consider the following. One, approve a list of claims. Two, approve request to the city of Sims to rent two ESNS model DS 200 voting machines in the amount of $250 per machine per day, and to provide one express votes machine at no charge for a total fee in the amount of $500 for their municipal elections to be held August 26. And if a runoff election is required, an additional 500 for the same equipment for use on September 23. Three, approve sponsorship agreement with Friends of the Pritchard Public Library in the amount of $1,000 from District 1 Commission Funds for its Citizen of the Year banquet. Four, approve amendment to the annual appropriation contract with the Explore Center, doing business as Gulf Coast Explorium Science Center, to increase the contract amount from 75,000 to 90,000. The additional funds in the amount of 15,000 from District 2 Education Funds for its Fall 2025 exhibit Tiny Titans Hatching the Past. Five, approve sponsorship agreement with Alabama Kidney Foundation in the total amount of $3,000 for its annual kidney walk in celebration with funds divided as follows. Six, approve sponsorship agreement with Drug Education Council in the total amount of $1,500 for its annual fundraising luncheon with funds divided as follows. Seven, approve appropriation contract with the Gulf Coast Ethnic and Heritage Jazz Festival Productions in the amount of $10,000 from District 1 Education Funds for its Marcus Johnson Summer Jazz Camp. Eight, approve sponsorship agreement with Sims Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $2,000 from District 2 Commission Funds for the Sims Azalea Festival. Nine, approve application of Saturday Inc. for a more than 30-day special retail alcohol license for Boondocks Beer Garden on Park Boulevard in Irvington.
Is this for the racetrack? Is this for the Mobile International Speedway?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So it says more than 30 days. It's like a... Is there a time specific? I've just never noticed that language.
I think the reason, I think it's seasonal. I don't think they have events there every weekend, so I think it's just for their race season that I think it would probably expire at the end of race season, and they would probably renew it then. If I had to guess, I'm not... Is that about... Or did they explain that in the application at all? They're not there but a couple months, I guess, so maybe that's why they do it as a... An event instead of just a annual license.
It looks like that's just a category of the license, either less than 30 days or more than 30 days.
Okay. Ten, authorize advertising for bids for Michael Square Revenue Commission UPS Upgrades.
I'm sorry. When you're done with that one, I'm sorry. I need to ask about... I'll go back to number nine, because I know there was some kind of... I didn't know if they were having a race this weekend. I know when they had wanted this on the agenda two weeks ago, and we... Are they having a race this... Do we need to approve this today for a race this weekend, I guess, is the question?
Well, if we could approve it today, that would be great.
Yeah. Would you have a problem with approving that today for the racetrack? I believe they have a race this weekend, and they submitted this before the previous meeting, and so we've had it for two weeks now, I think, almost. And I just, I didn't see the need to put it on the agenda in such a rush the last time.
Mr. Grant, if you want to wait, we can wait, but I just didn't know if they had an event this weekend.
Okay. The only reason I'm hesitant is because I just like the public to have notice in case...
And I do, too, but I just wasn't sure. If you're not comfortable, we can just wait till Monday.
Okay. And Danny, you think... Are you thinking that this is not going to be impacted by that?
I don't know. Yesterday, that didn't come up.
I don't... I think this is for the round track. For some reason, I think the drag strip is separate from the round track, and I... So I think they have their own license at the drag strip. And if they don't have a race at the round track this weekend, this won't affect them. All right, thank you, Danny. We can just vote on it Monday.
Thank you.
Sorry, Eddie.
Eleven, approve change order number one with cornerstone detention products for 2023-24 detention intercom test and inspection at Metro Jail and Barracks, decreasing the contract amount by $30,000. The new contract will be in the total amount of $67,065.78. Twelve, reject all bids for Metro Jail Temporary Heat Ventilation and Air Conditioning Power Distribution Upgrades bid exceeded the available budget. Thirteen, approve group sales agreement with Grand Hotel Golf Resort and Spa for accommodations, meeting space, and meals for a leadership forum at a cost not to exceed the amount of $16,500, and authorize the county commission president to execute all documents. Fourteen, approve professional services contract with Graham Corporation Communications to provide training and facilitation services for a leadership forum for a total fee in the amount of $4,500 plus reasonable travel-related expenses, and authorize the county commission president to execute the contract. Fifteen, approve submission of grant renewal application to the Corporation for National and Community Service for the Americor Senior and Mobile County Senior Companion Program in the amount of $613,578 divided as follows. Sixteen, approve submission of grant renewal application to the Corporation for National and Community Service for the continuation of the Americor Seniors Mobile County Foster Grandparent Program in the amount of $571,658 and divided as follows. Seventeen, approve sponsorship agreement with Mobile Area Interface Conference in the amount of $1,000 from District 1 Commission Funds for its tea time with Team Chaplaincy Charity Golf Tournament. Eighteen, approve taking the following action on bids.
On the first item, the electronic surveillance system, I see an item right behind it. Is that because we were rescinding that with awarding that bid to the next one to Video Southeast Vision Southeast Companies? Is that for the same location?
We'll get that answer and get back to you, Commissioner.
I just, I was wondering, because that was, I know some, one place that had particularly requested surveillance, and just to make sure that this was not going to slow that down.
Okay. On the... Tina, on these hunting leases, is that annual, or is that for the entire three years?
Commissioner, I'm not involved in the hunting leases on...
Oh, I thought you did those. Who?
I'm not sure.
Oh, Ozzy. Is that an annual fee, or is that for the full length of the three years?
Full length of the three years. Those are the highest bidders that we received.
Okay.
Nineteen, approve contract with Turner Wilson Fence Company for Escataboah Hollow Park Project Line Fence for the installation of 2,500 linear feet of six-foot-tall residential-grade chain link fence with barbed wire in the amount of $67,500.
Why are we putting barbed wire? Barbed wire?
On number nineteen?
Uh-huh.
We're having issues with security on that border, that area of the park, and it is somewhat inexpensive because it's a long distance.
So we put in barbed wire on residential-grade chain link? It says residential grade.
Chance, you want to come talk about the scope of that fence project? Chance has been working with the contractor and on the issues with that neighbor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've had issues with mostly stray aggressive dogs.
Dogs?
Dogs, a lot of dogs. So you get a little more linear fence, it's going to get cut at some point anyway, so we got more distance out of residential than commercial.
Okay. So, but the dogs can't get to the barbed wire, can they? I mean, I'm assuming barbed wire is at the top. I, I'm just, I have a thing about barbed wire.
There's been trespassers as well, so it's just a deterrent to keep people out of that side of the park and, you know, scaling the fence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that on the west side of the park?
East side.
Twenty, approve renewal of agreement with Orkin Pest Control in the amount of $608 for the Centracon Termite Colony Elimination System for the sheriff's office. Twenty, approve memorandum of understanding between Mobile County Sheriff's Office and the United States Secret Service to establish procedures and responsibilities to intercept and obstruct Terrorism Act of 2001, and authorize the commission president to sign all the documents.
Is this a renewal, Mr. Lawyer?
As I understand it from Frank Cassidy, it's a new agreement and not a renewal. I can provide it to you, and I'll confirm after the meeting.
This is... I don't remember seeing this before.
Right. That's why I think it's a new agreement and not a renewal, but I'll confirm.
Okay. Do you know anything about this?
Just looking at it, we have a lot of deputies who are assigned to these task forces for these federal agencies, and it looks like probably this is one of them where there's an understanding of what the deputy's responsible. We have people attached to the FBI, the Secret Service, the DEA, and that's, that could be what it looks like.
We charge... I noticed that. Does it mean we can charge their time?
Their time, their time and their vehicles and their overtime is paid for by whatever, if they're attached to that or assigned to, I guess would be a better word, to that federal agency. It just helps the federal agencies in this area that are short on manpower, then we're able to assign a deputy, and they, I think they pay their salary, their overtime, and for their vehicle and some equipment that they get, so that's usually what it is. The Secret Service Task Force, they have a lot to do with a lot of the cyber crimes, so I think we have several deputies assigned to that task force. And it comes with some pretty good equipment for the sheriff's office to use for also... And they typically investigate crimes in the county, like if the city of Mobile will have an officer assigned to the same task force, it generally handles the crimes in the city or assists with those in all the other municipalities as well. But there's some good equipment that comes with these agreements that we have with these federal agencies, particularly in that cyber crimes department, computers and equipment they are able to use to also help solve crimes in the county that's not of a federal... It doesn't read that, meet that, but that's what it looks like to me if I had to guess. And I'm sure Frank will text me before the meeting's over and let me know if I'm wrong.
I saw the... I thought I saw some payment for that time, which is good, but the equipment is also...
I don't want to go too far and say they pay their salary. I think the sheriff's office still pays their salary, but any overtime that they work helping assist on federal cases is reimbursed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Twenty-two, adopt resolution authorizing amendment to the subrecipient agreement with the Afric Town Redevelopment Corporation and Restore Mobile to amend the scope of services provided by Afric Town Redevelopment Corporation in compliance with updated guidance issued by the US, United States Department of Treasury for the purposes of furthering the development of affordable housing through specific communities within Mobile County, and authorize the commission president to sign all documents.
I think after corporation, it should be "and" and not "with."
I agree. Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-three, approve sponsorship agreement with the National Organization of Black County Officials, a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to supporting community outreach initiatives and best practices in government in the amount of $10,000. And that is all from us commissioners.
Ready, Ms. Gill?
Okay, number one, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from the following property owners for the following projects. Number two, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 22 on Bass Drive in the amount of $500 for Project Bass Drive, Brain Drive, Stripe Drive, Great Drain Basin Pave. Number three, approve right-of-way.
Excuse me. Are the 2018s our oldest projects still out there? Do we have any 2016s?
We have some that have federal aid, like our Ziegler Boulevard is in right-of-way acquisition. It was a 2016. 2014 also has Dawes Road, which is a federal aid project, and then 2012 still has Tanner Williams Road, which is under construction. So we're so close on several of those, but still a few.
I was just curious how far back we... Okay, thank you.
Number three, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 7 on Maddox Road in the amount of $250 for product, project of Maddox Road, Great Drain Basin Pave. Number four, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 29 on Ziegler Boulevard in the amount of $14,500 for Project Ziegler Boulevard Additional Lanes. Number five, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 13 on Wheatcroft Road North in the amount of $600 for Project Wheatcroft Road North, Great Drain Basin Pave. Number six, approve preliminary plat only of Coxwell Crossing, Unit 3 off Fair Coxwell Road and McLeod Road. This is a private road subdivision, and the roads within the subdivisions will not be accepted by Mobile County for maintenance. Number seven, approve preliminary and final plat of Wawa subdivision at Eliza Jordan and Airport Boulevard, preliminary and final plat of Warden Place off Hugh Fork Road, preliminary and final plat of GPS Woods off Oliver Clark Road in Irvington-Balabatri Highway, and preliminary and final plat of Resub Russ Stork off Paget Switch Road and Inslee Road. Items eight, nine, and 10 are related to the final series of bonds for our 2022 Pay-as-you-go program. Number eight, adopt resolution to accept proposal from Regents Bank for the purchase of the county's $19 million Pay-as-you-go Road Bridge and Drainage Facilities Bond Series 22C. Item nine, adopt resolution and order authorizing the issuance of $19 million principal amount of Pay-as-you-go Road Bridge and Drainage Facilities Bonds Series 22C, 2022C, to be dated March 1, 2025. Item 10 is adopt resolution and order calling for redemption on March 10, 2025, all of the county's $19 million Pay-as-you-go Road Bridge and Drainage Facilities Bonds Series 2022C. Items 11, 12, and 13 are similar items for our first series of bonds for our 2024 Pay-as-you-go program. Number 11 is a resolution to accept proposal from Regents Bank for the purchase of the county's $30 million Pay-as-you-go Road Bridge and Drainage Facilities Bond Series 2024A. Item 12, adopt resolution and order authorizing the issuance of $30 million principal amount of Pay-as-you-go bonds. Number 13, adopt resolution and order calling for redemption on March 10, all of the county's $30 million Pay-as-you-go bond Series 2024A. Number 14, approve a reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on public right-of-way with Alabama Power Company for Project Natchez Trace Road, Great Drain Basin Pave. The estimated cost to Mobile County is $139,796. Number 15, approve and adopt a mile program application from Chief Darby Weaver of the Choctaw Nation of Indians for the adoption of a segment of Coysmith Highway from Fatilla Road eastward to Shepherd House Road for approximately five miles. Number 16, authorize consenting to the assignment of construction contracts with H.O. Weaver and Sons Incorporated relating to the Mobile County Improvement Projects as listed below to AIPAC Alabama Inc. as a result of the sale and purchase of certain assets pending legal review. That's it.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Wallace?
Before you adjourn, I was going to share this with Mr. Fox. He's got an email, like to share an executive session with the two of you. It takes five minutes. It relates to a matter of security.
I got the same email.
You got the same thing, then?
Yeah, and I'm...
Okay, well then...
We don't have to have an executive session. I'll say in public, if it continues to go on, I've already contacted the sheriff, and it's physical threats of harm from this group at Big Creek Lake towards myself and towards Commissioner Hudson. And if it continues to go on, I am going to press charges. There are threats of physical violence.
I've seen them played as yesterday.
So, yeah, I got the same email. We don't have to do it, and I'll let them know in public.
I just wanted to... I'll share it with Commissioner.
They have posted my home address where my family is, and I don't take that lightly. I would advise you not to show up at my house where my family is, but it's been going on for weeks now, but I just got the email with the most recent threats, and Commissioner Hudson probably needs to be made aware of it.
I'll let her know, and I'll share it with...
Vehicle descriptions, home addresses, where people go to church, and not just to confront, but, I mean, one of the threats, not towards the two of us, but towards the director of Maus, was I'll tell you how to take care of him, .40 caliber at a close range and a .243 at long range. So that's the kind of threat that's being made towards Bud McCory and towards myself and towards Commissioner Hudson. And I'm letting you know upfront, if you... Not even if it continues, if I can get charges pressed on what's already been done, I'm already talking to the sheriff about it. I'm not going to be threatened. My life's not going to be threatened over trying to do a job for the community, period. So, anyway, sorry. It's... I just got the same email from the... But, anyway, it's...
That's all I have.
It's aggravating.
You have an announcement to make for Sunday.
Sure. Did you want... Oh, yeah. So I do want to...
So, I do want to talk about something on a lighter note. So, we're going to be having a ribbon cutting and a grand opening at Bayfront Park this Saturday... Or I'm sorry, Sunday. We'll open the gates at noon and festivities, if you call them that, will begin from 2:00 to 4:00. We'll have face painting and some free hot dogs and chips and drinks while supplies last. Live music by the Mailman, our very own here in Mobile County. A rock climbing wall. Scavenger hunt. I'm not sure. I think the Azalea Trailmaids will be present and I believe... Did the Sea Lab ever respond?
We've asked them to come. Marine Resources will be there and we've asked Sea Lab.
So...
And yes, the Azalea Trailmaids will be there.
We're... I'm very excited. I think the entire commission is very excited when we're able to open these parks back up. And I was down yesterday and it's beautiful and I'm excited about it. It's a brand-new playground there and there's seven pavilions there, a new restroom and office facility. And also our 900-foot-long pocket beach that is there. So, we invite everybody from the public and everybody from the Mobile County employees and staff to please join us. And I'm sure Tina will be there and Matthew. And I can't go... It can't go without saying what a fantastic job y'all have done managing this project. I'm super proud of that park. I was there... Like again, I was there yesterday and it's beautiful. You just have to come out and see for yourself how beautiful it is and you really just can't explain, describe it. But again, that's this Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00 will be the festivities. The gates open at 12:00. And I'm also, I guess, a little excited. Commissioner Blankenship from the Department of Conservation Natural Resources will be here joining us. He was very instrumental in a lot of the funding at this park, so we're excited to have him with us too.
Is this Restore?
Yes. The... NERTA. Yes, NERTA.
So, you want to explain what that is? We announce a lot of parks and, you know, I guess sometimes people wonder why parks and... But it's about public access and there's a pot of money. So, would you explain how we were able to do that, please?
Happily. So, natural resource damage assessment funds that come into play after an oil spill. And this is after, as a result of the Deepwater Horizon oil spill. And it is to make up for lost... For impacts. And the loss and the impact for us in this case was the loss of human use. So, the NERTA funding was allocated throughout the Gulf for improving public access to the waters of the coast. So, they selected Bayfront Park for that very reason and have invested about $9.5 million.
The oil spill was a terrible event that negatively impacted a lot of people and their livelihoods, but to the extent that the damages were that, we've been able to turn them back into good things that are happening in the community.
This is our one... So, the county has utilized GMASA funding for the other waterfront parks and projects, but this is our one NERTA project.
Yeah, and I like to say it all the time and it's a fact. This doesn't cost $9.5 million and we have an additional $3 million to build a boardwalk there. And I like to say that it really... It's really not coming out of the taxpayers' pockets. It doesn't cost... I mean, it cost us all with the BP oil spill, but as far as tax dollars, we're getting a brand-new park down here and it's not having to come out of the taxpayers. I like to say that a lot, particularly when we do things like that, like Cedar Point Pier and the renovations going on there, the Shoreline Restoration Project, Bayfront Park, the property we purchased at Burnwood. I mean, none of that has cost... And we're... That's probably at least $30 million with the projects right there that hasn't cost the taxpayers a dollar. And we get the citizens of Mobile County and really the citizens of anywhere but the state of Alabama when you talk about Cedar Point Pier. If you're a resident of the state of Alabama, you don't even have to have a fishing license there. And so, these are all good things, are all good quality of life concerns for the people in Mobile. And I always like to emphasize that, you know, we... I know I do and I know the other two commissioners and Tina, we work hard to get these grants to get these projects. And Tina, I know you work super hard on all of these park projects to get these parks where they're at without costing the county a lot of money. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing up the boardwalk. So, that is work to be done at Bayfront. We had to go back and ask for additional funding. So, that phase will get underway in the coming weeks. So, we won't have a boardwalk for Sunday, but we do have a beach and a playground for sure.
And I want to add too that the boardwalk will not affect the operating hours of the park. It's in a position where we will be able to do that construction without having to interfere with the operation of the park. It'll be open. And that's another thing I'll add. After this Sunday, this park will be open daily for use for the citizens in Mobile County and we're excited to get it done. And that was, you're right, and the reason it's not is because the funding had run out and I had talked to Commissioner Blankenship, who was on the board there. And at the time, when I initially called, there was no more money. There was just none. And then later on, some more money come available and we were able to get the boardwalk. I think it's 1,500 feet, 1,500-foot boardwalk there.
And it will connect to the sidewalk? So, it'll be a walking loop through a boardwalk and sidewalk?
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anything else? You don't want to say anything? If nothing else, we stand adjourned.